Call the Luddington City Council meeting for Monday, January 27, 2025 to order. It's officially 6 o'clock, so Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Counselor Terzano.
Present.
Counselor Krenbrink.
Here.
Counselor Wenceski.
Here.
Counselor Large.
Here.
Counselor Stibbets.
Here.
Counselor Shaw.
Here.
Counselor Bulger.
Here.
I present.
Thank you. At this point, we would invite Pastor Ryan White to come to the podium and give us the invocation or pronounce the invocation.
Thank you. Let's pray. Thank you, God, for your word. Thank you that you are refuge and strength. Thank you that you are our helper who is always found in times of trouble. So therefore, God, because you're so great, we will not be afraid, though the earth trembles and the mountains topple into the depths of the sea, though its waters roar and foam and the mountains quake with its turmoil. God, we thank you for the common grace that you give us to work together, to live together, to serve together, and to help the people of the city to live and work and enjoy the beauty of Luddington together. God, thank you that we can make friends here, that we can live in harmony with one another, and that we can grow and develop and serve the people of our community, no matter what our ethnic background. God, with malice toward none and charity toward all, we're just so grateful. And God, we just pray that you'd help us to live our lives, loving our neighbors, doing for others what we would have others to do for us. We thank you, God, that you would help us and that ultimately you would be bringing people to faith in Jesus Christ, to come and to know what and understand the life that truly is life. We ask, God, that you would especially bless those who are serving the needs of our community through the committee, the committees that are set up and in place in our local government, for the Finance and Personnel Committee, Public Safety Committee, the Cemeteries, Parks and Recreation Committee, and the Building and Licenses Committee, and all those others that are serving just behind the scenes to help life in our community to go well for those who are living here. We especially pray for the safety of our police, our fire, EMS, and first responders. We're reminded this week, God, that sometimes those people who are putting themselves in harm, in harms way for the good and safety of us, God, do to get hurt, and we just pray for healing for those who are recovering right now from the injuries that they sustained this last week. We want to thank you, God, for training opportunities that you give to our new counselors, and I pray for safety as they travel to be trained in February. We ask that you give them a great time together, to build good relationships with one another, give them safety as they travel to and from their training time. And we also want to thank you, God, for public servants like Fabian Nizaki. Thank you for his many faithful years of service in our county. We ask, God, that you would give us more public servants like that who serve us well. God, we don't know what will happen this year, but we trust you and you alone for you are good. We ask for wisdom, discernment, and your help, God, and we want to thank you especially for the skills and abilities that you've given everyone in this room. May we use those abilities to the best of our, to the most that we can, to serve others for good in our community. We thank you for all things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
At this time, would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Justice, One Nation Under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll open the floor for public comment. Request that anyone wishing to address council would please step to the lectern, speak directly into the microphone, and state your name, street address, or ward, city of residence, and organizational affiliation, if that's appropriate. Once you've done this, you'll be recognized for three minutes. Please address all comments to this chair. If the time limit expires during any comment, I ask that the speaker respectfully finish her sentence and yield the floor. If you wish to present materials directly to the council, I ask you leave those materials on the lectern shelf below the microphone, and then there'll be another opportunity for public comment following communications from city officials, and the floor is now open.
This council is set to recognize retiring County Administrator Fabian Nizaki for his decades of service and that is surely warranted. My remembrance of him would be his responses made to about 10 FOIA requests I made to the county over his tenure. He would respond quickly, fully, politely, and would never ask for unwarranted fees. I contrast his behavior with what the city has done over the years. John Shane and his willing Police Chief Mark Barnett would commit public extortion for a decade, setting illegitimate fees for FOIA requests in order to constructively deny them. This council would back both scoundrels when they asked for $2,500 for the Baby K Police report several years after the fact. They claimed a senior officer would need to take 100 hours to separate out exempt material. I had to waste the local court's time to knock this down and find that in the 96-page report I received, there were no exemptions, separations made other than the ones that are automatically taken off by the software on the first few pages. It was definitely an attempt at public extortion, and this council was fully behind the fraud. You still are. In the courts right now, the city is trying to say that two of the three body cam videos of arrests are requested need over $600 worth in redactions by a senior officer, whereas private security footage and a deputy's body cam of those same outdoor arrests indicate that there would be zero redactions needed, zero, and that aforementioned senior police officer here today was present at the one arrest and would know that there would be zero redactions needed. Last week, you received my latest FOIA fee appeal, which came from my asking to look at the 2024 transaction records of the city's credit cards. Three illegal charges were imposed on my request. In a just city, such a response would impose three criminal charges of public extortion on the city attorney. Allow me to describe each of these three illegal charges. First, I was charged for two hours of a clerk's time to retrieve these records. I don't know how the city organizes its records, but for many households, they use a file folder like this to store the monthly transaction records of one or more credit cards. For them, retrieving such records would amount to them going over their filing cabinet and taking out the folder. Successful retrieval in under a minute. To be continued.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anna Nixon, 200 West Loom Street, Department 301. In 2019, we had extremely high water, which caused flooding down Rath and Melundy and And you guys had to figure out how to get the water to stay, drain back off with the sump pump. But while we were trying to get the water off the streets and that, you had some engineering company studying what to do to do the permanent solution, and because of all the sand and brine, and that we're putting all that, and also automotive particulates, that's all draining down the storm drains that are going straight into Lake Michigan. Even with us taking the, the, the snow from the snowbanks that we make when we plow the roads that you take down to Loom Street boat ramp, that's also containing the salt, sand and brine that's going into Lake Michigan. The engineering department, company that told you guys what the solution was for the high water was to make a new substation to take all these storm drains and run into Lake Michigan and put them into it to keep the water from coming up and also keep it, that lake clean. So please consider finding a grant so we can have clean water, since we love our vacationing people that want to enjoy clean water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Consular members, and attorneys on the council. My name is Ray Karabowski, and I'm here to address a matter of constitutional and statutory importance concerning the misuse of public trust and the unlawful continuation of Waterways Commission and related entities. This issue directly affects our community's rights, resources, and governance. Over the past months, we have provided this council with substantial documentation, including key proof requested by the city attorney, specifically the emails from 2022, which were used in Circuit Court proceedings in 2023, demonstrating the unlawful overreach of the Department of Natural Resources, including the testimony of Ron Olson. This evidence confirms that the statutory limitations have been violated, and the city now has a solid foundation to take a stand. The question now is this: What will this council do? You have sworn an oath to uphold the Constitution and serve the public's good. As officers of the court, your attorneys here are bound by the ethical obligation to ensure justice is served. Ignoring this issue when you now possess the proof is no longer an option. It would be a disservice, a disservice to the community and a breach of your responsibilities. The city manager has acknowledged that the DNR would need to provide justification, yet to date, this has not occurred. The burden of privilege claimed by Olson cannot supersede the constitutional obligation of transparency and accountability. You now have legal and moral justification to act. I'm asking this, the council to publicly acknowledge receipt of the evidence and place this issue on the next agenda for a full discussion. Direct the city attorney to issue a formal demand for further records and clarity from the DNR. Ensure this council takes a firm stand on protecting our community's riparian rights and public trust. Inaction is not an option. This is your opportunity to demonstrate leadership and uphold your sworn duties. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm ready when you are. Get me going on a smooth foot. Mr. Mayor, good evening. I'm here to highlight how the historical actions of the Michigan State Waterways Commission and its collaborators have undermined Luddington's local control over its waterfront. Their agenda, rooted in overreach and questionable legality, has lasting consequences for our community. One example is the city of Luddington's 1972 request to partner with the Michigan Waterways Commission on developing a marina as outlined in a letter by city manager James Cartier. The letter demonstrates the city's dependence on state-driven processes to secure funds and guidance for waterfront projects. While the city believed it was pursuing progress, the Waterways Commission was consolidating control over riparian lands under a defunct legal framework. Figures like Keith Wilson and Buddy Reed, through their leadership, ensured this pattern continued for decades. The correspondence and agreements from that time show that Luddington was drawn into a system where local anonymity was compromised. The commission framed their involvement as support, but it came with stipulations and enduring oversight that kept Luddington's decisions tied to Lansing. Today, the influence of those outdated and unlawful practices remain. As recently as last year, new information came to light showing the continued overreach of state agencies like the Department of Natural Resources. Despite this, our city has the evidence and legal foundation to challenge this control and restore local authority over our waterfront. I urge the council to review this history and the documentation we provided, including filings and records like the 1972 letter, which shows how deeply these issues are rooted. It's time for Luddington to reclaim its voice and its rights. I have here the original letters, copies of the original letters, of the original loan in 1972 that began the construction of the first marina here in Luddington. It is an agreement, and it's here to be put in the record of what this discussion was about tonight. I thank you for your time and the opportunity to come up here and speak before you.
Thank you.
My name is Katie Karabowski. I'm Raymond Karabowski's daughter, and I am addressing you today as a current senior at Luddington High School. I stand before you tonight to ask that you reflect on the negative impact of the DNR's misuse of the Waterways Commission and the effect that it has had on trust within our community and the lives of families who live here. For as long as I can remember, my dad has worked a demanding full-time job at Michigan Power here in Luddington. In addition to that, he has owned Ray's Marina. Most families with a business can provide for their family through that business and rely on it as their primary income. However, due to the DNR's misuse of the Waterways Commission, there has been a lack of transparency and historical mismanagement of the taxpayers of Luddington, where they have been funding the city's marina to the point where they now operate in debt while receiving grants for new docks and facilities. Meanwhile, my father's marina struggles to make a profit due to this unfair competition. I would like to make it clear that it is incredibly difficult to keep a business afloat when your competitors don't face the same challenges as you. I have personally helped my dad build docks from scratch, and he has had to miss many important events in my life, like rugby games and track meets, just to work his second job to ensure that his marina stays in business. I distinctly remember how much his absence affected me as early as fourth grade. I wrote a paper about the unconstitutional actions surrounding Luddington City marinas. I received an A on that paper because it was well researched and effectively made my point. I hope you can see my point here tonight, as over the years, I have come to realize that the effects of this issue are much bigger than you might think. That's why I'm here today, standing up for what's right, whether or not you choose to listen to what I have to say and the evidence presented before me. The negative impacts of the Waterways Commission and the DNR's misuse of it and the failure to act responsibly and lawfully have had a significant effect on my daily life as well as the lives of all marina owners in our area. It is time to recognize the importance of the Waterways Commission to act with transparency as their actions have negatively affected the citizens of Luddington. I know this is not the purpose for which the Waterways Commission was established. Therefore, in order to prevent further erosion of trust between the citizens and business owners of Luddington, I urge you, as our city's current leaders, to carefully consider the evidence that my family and others have brought forward. It is essential that fairness and truth guide future decisions made on this issue. God willing, I hope you will take action to preserve the integrity of Luddington for all of us and future generations to come. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other public comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. And that would be the approval of the consent agenda. And I would ask that council consider amending our agenda as presented to include under City Council Business FOI Extension Discussion.
So moved as amended.
Support. Any other comments? We have a motion by Counselor Stibbets, support by Counselor Bulger. Any comments or questions?
Your Honor, could you please give a real brief synopsis of what we're approving? I did catch FCA, but I don't know if the public.
I'm sorry, thank you. Attorney Hammer, would you mind?
He's just asking for clarification on what's in the consent agenda, not clarification.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed that. So approval of the January 13, 2025, regular meeting minutes, the payment of bills, and adopting this agenda as amended. Thank you. Sorry about that, Counselor Shaw. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, we'll move along to Finance and Personnel Committee, Counselor Wenceski.
Yep, we've got quite a few things to look at tonight. The first one is a frame repair on DPW roll-off truck number six. The DPW is seeking council's approval for the replacement of the frame of DPW truck number six, which is one of our three roll-off style trucks. These roll-off trucks are utilized year-round for hauling brush, leaves, and snow. During recent routine maintenance and inspection, a significant crack in the main support frame on truck number six was discovered, so we removed this truck from service. After considering the cost of the repair, $33,100, estimate, which does not include incidental repairs that may be found and need to be addressed, the cost of replacing with a newer used truck, $50,000 to $60,000, and the cost of replacing with a brand-new truck, $150,000, it is my opinion that repairing the current truck is the most appropriate course of action with the least amount of budget impact. And this is from Andy Lar. Having all three roll-off trucks operational greatly increases the efficiency of removing brush and leaves from residents' properties, as well as snow piles from downtown streets, sidewalks, and parking lots. While there are sufficient funds available in the motor pool repair maintenance line item currently to cover this repair, I did not budget specifically for this repair because the issue wasn't discovered until late fall. We are planning on selling some antiquated surplus equipment this year that may offset some or all of this repair cost, but there is the potential of a budget amendment being necessary later in the year. I move to authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents with onsite truck and repair, equipment repair incorporated, for the frame replacement on truck number six in the amount of $33,100, more or less, with funds available in the motor pool repair maintenance line item, as recommended by the Finance Committee.
A motion by Counselor Wenceski, support by Counselor Large, to approve the frame repair for roll-off truck number six. Do we have any comments or questions?
I'd like to make just one comment here. January's not over yet. We just did our, and so we're in the beginning of the new year. This is not a budgeted item, this repair, which, which happens. Things just happen like that. This is what our general fund, our emergency fund, is for, things like this. So I appreciate Andy's looking to try to recoup that money by selling some scrap and getting rid of some things he doesn't need, but just so we all are aware that this is what that emergency fund is for, things like this. So thanks.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Number two is a look at the Personnel Manual Update. On February 21, 2024, a committee comprising employees from various departments and supervisors convened to review and recommend updates to the city's Personnel Manual. Meeting twice a month, the committee diligently addressed outdated policies, incorporated illegally required updates, and added provisions to reflect recent changes, such as those related to MMRA policies, hands-free driving laws, and social media and cellphone use. While there were some disagreements during the process, the committee remained focused on thoroughly reviewing each section. After comments received from counselors at the last regular city council meeting, held on January 13, 2025, the Personnel Manual was updated to include a suggested change from Labor Attorney Beth Young and a few minor changes from Counselor Bulger. The attached draft represents the collective efforts of the committee, legal council, and management. It is recommended that the city council adopt the revised Personnel Manual to ensure it reflects current practices, legal requirements, and the city's commitment to its employees. And I so move.
Do we have support for that? A motion by Counselor Wenceski, support by Counselor Terzano, to approve the updated Personnel Policy Manual, as you have in your packets. Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Next, we're going to lump together a bunch of items on the MERS 457, and our city manager, Caitlin, is going to explain some of these things. Thanks, Caitlin.
Thank you, Counselor Wenceski. The first agenda item that you have in front of you is a matter of housekeeping in relation to the MERS 457 participation agreements for the SEIU union and non-union employees and administrators. Both of these employer matching contributions for the SEIU unions were approved by council, I believe, back in, let's see, January of 2020? Is that right, Debbie? And then another, another change back in July of 2024. However, the addendums were not actually signed with MERS at the time council made those changes on our end. So this is just a matter of signing those addendums with MERS to make them official. And I believe that the motion is allowing the clerk to execute those documents. Is that correct, Debbie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't comfortable signing those just because the changes were made before I was here. So that is the first part of that, of that agenda item. Are there any questions on that?
Yes, Your Honor. So this was an oversight, and now we're going to make it up with an additional $5,536 to correct that. Is that going to be retroactive, and will people who have just recently retired, will they benefit? they benefit from that as well?
Let me reiterate here, so there are a couple things that is happening. So two changes were not reflected with MERS addendums. Number one, in January of 2020, the city agreed to provide matching contributions to the 457 at a rate up to 3%. We never filed the paperwork with MERS, but we've been providing up to a 3% match since 2020.
Thank you.
Yep. And then in July of '24, we increased that match for certain groups, and that group was the administrative group, from a 3% match to a 5% match. So we've also been contributing that since July. We just also did not file the paperwork with MERS like we were supposed to. If I was the city manager then, I would honestly probably just sign the paperwork because it was approved, but I wasn't, so I wasn't comfortable just signing the paperwork. I felt I should go back to council and have the appropriate individual sign it who was here at the time. I don't know if that makes any sense, there is no new additional cost at this time. What will be an additional cost is with the new employee manual that was just adopted, the non-union and -- was there one other group?
No, just the non-union hourly was --
Thank you. The non-union hourly group was not included in that 3% to 5% bump last July, and they are now included as of the new employee manual update tonight. So that is the new budget impact.
As of the signing of this budget right here?
As -- yes.
Okay, but not going backwards?
Correct. Yep. I'm sorry, it's confusing, and there's too many 457s in pensions to keep straight in my head. Great question.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other?
Yes. Okay, any other questions?
So do we have a motion? Are you making that motion to?
Yep, I'll make the motion to approve the MERS 457 agreements and addendums, SEIU union administrators and non-union hourly.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Give a motion by Counsel Wachesky, second by Counsel Trizano, to approve MERS 457 plan agreements and addendums for the SEIU union administrators and non-union hourly. Do you have any comments or questions? No. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same. Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, the next memorandum is also a request related to the MERS 457 employer contributions. The first half are three separate amendment requests. One is for the police chief contract, another is for the police captain contract, and the other is for my contract, the city manager. These three employment contracts have negotiated their own retirement contribution through the MERS 457 retirement program. Because they are three different retirement contributions, and none of them are the same contribution level as the other employment groups, employee groups, they should have their own addendums. So when the police chief contracts went into effect, an addendum should have been filed with MERS. When the captain was hired, an addendum should have been filed with MERS, and then same with when I was hired, an addendum should have been filed. Those addendums were not filed. So this is also a matter of paperwork and just going back and filing those addendums. So this is an ask that the city clerk be authorized to sign and file those addendums with MERS. All three of these are not new costs to the city, these are agreed-upon contributions authorized in our contracts at the time of hire by this body.
Thank you.
Any questions about that first half?
Okay, Counsel Wachesky, do you have a motion for the?
Sure, we'll take care of these three. I'll make a motion to authorize the city clerk to execute the amended MERS 457 program and the MERS 457 employer contribution addendum dated November 1st, 2024, for the purpose of providing retirement benefits for city manager Caitlin Aldridge as outlined in her employment contract, approved by city council on September 30th, 2024.
Okay, do we have a support?
Second.
Give a motion by Counsel Wachesky, seconded by Counsel Trizano, to authorize a city clerk to execute a MERS 457 plan agreement and addendum for the city manager. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
And I'll make a motion to authorize the city clerk to execute the amended MERS 457 program and MERS 457 employer contribution addendum dated September 1st, 2023, for the purpose of providing retirement benefits for police chief Chris Jones as outlined in his employment contract approved by city council on September 12th, 2023.
I'll support.
Give a motion by Counsel Wachesky, support by Counsel Stibbets, to authorize clerk, city clerk, to execute MERS 457 plan agreements and addendum for the police chief. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
And I make a motion to authorize the city clerk to execute the amended MERS 457 program and MERS 457 employer contribution addendum dated January 1st, 2024, for the purpose of providing retirement benefits for police captain Michael Haveman as outlined in his employment contract approved by city council on December 18th, 2023.
Support. Give a motion by Counsel Wachesky, support by Counsel Large, to authorize city clerk to execute MERS 457 plan agreement and addendum for the police captain. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. The second half of this memo is very convoluted, and I will do my best to articulate it, so please don't be shy and feel free to cut me off if I either contradict myself or you have questions. Both the police chief and the police captain have language in their contracts that allow them to receive the administrative benefits that are outlined in the employee manual that you all have received in the last couple council packets. That includes the city's match for the 457 retirement, which used to be up to 3% and is now up to 5% for the administrative group as of July. And one of those individuals has taken advantage of that additional match since they started here. It was noticed in November, just going through paperwork and documents, that there's also a part of their contract that says they will receive their retirement contribution as defined in their contract, but then they will not receive any additional retirement benefit, even though a couple paragraphs later it says they will also receive all other benefits as defined in the employee manual, which states they receive an additional retirement benefit. So after extensive research and many hours on the subject, there was also some, a few, a piece of paper in their employee files that kind of outlined the benefits that they would receive that looked to be used as maybe an orientation document or something that was given to them early on in the hiring process, a summary of benefits they would receive, and it did include that additional retirement match. So we were forced by MERS to make a decision on how we were going to handle that additional retirement contribution. We had to proceed one of two ways. We either continued to allow those positions to participate in the additional employer match, or we did not allow those two positions to participate in the employer match, which would cause a domino effect. It would be a retroactive reversal of that employer match participation. So the employee that has been receiving the match would lose that match out of their retirement fund and all gains or losses that they have received since they have been participating in that program. Anyway, so after going through the paperwork, doing the research, finding out what was communicated to the employees by the city of Luddington at the time of their hire, going through personnel files, I think intent of former city managers and hiring committees, we collectively, the Finance and Personnel Committee and myself, are recommending that we amend the police captain and the police chief's contract to strike the language that they are not able to receive a further retirement contribution and allow them to fully participate in the employee manual benefits as all other administrators are able to, if they would like to make that additional retirement contribution and receive that additional match. I can continue on for two more hours about this subject, I will not do that to you. If you have questions, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
Counsel Wachesky?
So I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment to the employment agreement with Chief of Police Chris Jones, as recommended by the city manager and approved as to form by the city attorney.
Second.
Give a motion by Counsel Wachesky, supported by Counsel Trizano, to authorize city manager and city clerk to execute the First Amendment to the employment agreement for the police chief. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
And we have one more. I move to authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute the First Amendment to the employment agreement with police captain Michael Haveman as recommended by the city manager and approved as to form by the city attorney.
Do we have a support?
Second.
A motion by Counsel Wachesky, support by Counsel Trizano, to authorize city manager and city clerk to execute the First Amendment to the employment agreement for police captain. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Moving on to business, licensing, long-range planning, and industrial development, Counsel Trizano.
I have no report, but I do have one action item, and that's to adopt the revised obsolete property rehabilitation act, the Oprah guidelines. The new Oprah guidelines enable the city of Luddington to address several key goals outlined in the master plan. By offering flexible abatement terms based on a clear point-based system, the guidelines provide opportunities for small businesses and property owners who may not create significant job growth but can still contribute to the community's revitalization efforts. This system supports housing development, green infrastructure, public amenities, making the program accessible to projects of varying scales and fostering equitable development throughout the city. What we basically did with this, the current Oprah guidelines, they had incentives in there, like if you create 10 new jobs, or I can't remember what the exact number of it was, but when you're talking about small businesses, they're not doing that, right? I mean, creating two or three, so what we did, we developed a point system that really gets to, as I stated, some of the goals in the master plan. For example, if you put in electric vehicle infrastructure, you get points for that. If you do green infrastructure, you get points for that. If you do public infrastructure, repair, replace, or add like street curbs or sidewalks, you'll get points for that. If you create high-quality public spaces by putting in bike racks or public water fountains or public benches, you get points for that. The whole point of it is, the point system is really geared for the things that we would want and not some of the other points that really didn't apply to a lot of the developments that we were doing. So I make a motion to adopt the revised obsolete property rehabilitation act guidelines.
Support. Give a motion by Counsel Trizano, supported by Counsel Bulger, to adopt revised obsolete property rehabilitation act or Oprah guidelines. Any comments or questions?
I would like to make an additional comment. I would like to thank Counselor Bulger. In his tenure on building license, he actually took our original memorandum and unlike most lawyers, put it in very plain, clear English, in a very clear, concise Q and A format. So thank you, Counselor Bulger, for doing that.
Thank you.
So I have a question too, Counsel Trizano. On the Oprah, is that our criteria to make the points that we want to put down, like say you have to have 50 points or something?
Right.
Our city can do that and come up with a point system?
Yes.
I think this sounds really interesting and exciting. I mean, for small businesses, this does give them a shot at getting into that Oprah situation, and I like some of the ideas that you guys have for making it more useful for everyone, just not for them, but for the city as a whole.
Thanks.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, motion, I think we've already said that, so all those in favor of adopting the revised obsolete property rehabilitation act or Oprah guidelines, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
And that's all I have for this evening, Your Honor.
Moving on to Public Safety, Public Utilities, Counsel Bulger.
So I have no report and no action items, however, the chief is going to bring us the monthly police activity report.
Counsel Bulger, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for December 24, we had 213 calls for service, 32 arrests, 13 citations, and 70 parking citations. Couple of points to note, MDoPs for the year were down 10.8%, thefts were down 22%, frauds were down 24%, drug offenses were up 2%. We had 165 and a half hours of overtime, 36 employee requests, and three gun purchases in December. And that's all I have, happy to answer any questions.
Just thank you for everything that you do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have for this evening, Your Honor.
Very good, thank you. We'll move on to Cemetery Parks, Recreation, Waterfront, Counsel Stibbets.
Thank you, we have no report and no action items, but we do have a meeting tomorrow at 4 o'clock right here in council chambers, and that is all.
All righty, thank you. Move on to item number seven on our agenda, council, city council. Any items of business that you want to bring forward?
Sure, I've got a couple things. Just a report from Hamlin Township, they met on January 6.
They met on January 16th. Hamlin Township currently has 80 licenses available for short-term rentals. Seventy-three of them are assigned, and there are seven openings yet for short-term rentals there. The Hamlin Township Fire Department reported that 302 runs were made in 2024, and the Mason County Fire Authority has purchased a quote "Lucas" machine that performs automatic CPR on a victim. This machine will be housed in the Luddington Fire Barn, but it will be available to all Mason County units. Hamlin Township Board continues to work on filling a vacancy at their clerk position. The vacancy has hampered payments of payroll and bills, vivid discussion centered around qualifications, legal rules and procedures, and what is the right choice for the township. Two township meetings will be held this week, tonight is one, to hopefully come to a resolution about filling the vacancy for the township clerk. Also, this morning, I went to a West Michigan Shoreline Regional Development Commission meeting, and so just wanted to give you a few highlights from there. The annual audit was approved and a clean audit was presented. The Economic Development Authority was reauthorized in December, which provides many grants for economic development. The Hardy Dam in Newago County will be shut down this spring for repairs. The repairs will continue for three years, and the road crossing the dam will have to be detoured. Did you know that Lewis Farms is going to build a tunnel under US 31 to expand their opportunities? Interesting. And Muskegon Heights is looking for a new city manager. Last one I have is Coffee with the Councillors will be held on February, Thursday, February 6th, at 5:00 PM at the bookmark. Councillors Mike Shaw and John Trizano will be in attendance to answer questions and address concerns. Again, that's Thursday, February 6th, at 5:00 at the bookmark. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So, Your Honor, last Thursday, 5/7 of the council received an email which was requesting a FOIA, an appeal from a FOIA fee request that was given to the person who was making the request, wasn't shared with the city attorney, the mayor, or the city manager. Under the FOIA Act, the final decision body in dealing with the appeal is the council. Because under the Act, the request isn't deemed to have been received until the time of this meeting tonight, I'm going to make a motion to use the statutory 10-day extension of time. The problem is that we have to make a decision within 10 days. We're certainly not in a position to make it tonight because not even the whole council has had an opportunity to consider it. We have two council members for whom this is their first time at bat in dealing with a FOIA issue, and they have had virtually no opportunity to consider the fee issues involved. It's a complex issue, and in fairness to the council, but actually also in fairness to the appellant, using the extension of time to get educated about his request, the FOIA coordinator's decision to ask for a certain fee, and to better understand the ins and outs in dealing with this appeal, I think it's appropriate for us to use the statutory extension of time. So I'm moving that, under Michigan Compiled Laws 15.240A, sub-paragraph 2, sub-paragraph D, that the council direct the manager to send a notice of extending the time to respond for the additional 10 days allowed by statute.
Okay, that's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Looking for support for that.
I'll second it.
Given a motion by Counselor Bulger, support by Counsel Wenceski, to notify the appellant of the 10-day extension usage. That's abbreviated, okay? Thank you. All right. Any comments or questions?
The only addition I would make, and just in terms of the motion reflects the detailed reasons that Counselor Bulger relayed on the record, that formed the underlying basis for the extension, because that is required by the statute, so I want to make sure that those are included within the record. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to city manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do not have any report for this evening. I do, however, have one action item, and it is a resolution for the charitable gaming license for the Lake Shore Pirate Heads for the Buccaneer Bash on July 19th of 2025.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Thank you for not asking me to speak like a pirate, like Chris did this morning on WMOM.
All right, we have a motion by Counsel Wenceski, support by, or no, I'm sorry, Counsel Stibbets, supported by Counsel Large, to adopt the resolution for a charitable gaming license for Lake Shore Pirate Heads of Buccaneer Bash. Any comments or questions?
Can we have it that we say, we signify by saying "Arrgh!"
That's when lost control of the meeting. Is this a resolution that needs to be roll call voted? Okay. All right. In honor of Counsel Bulger's, all those in favor signify by saying "Arrgh!" Those opposed, same sign. That'd be a nay.
Does that mean the Rs have it?
The Rs have it. Motion carried. Thank you for your indulgence. Any other items of business?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
All right. I have one thing, and one report, and then a resolution that you have copies of in your packet. First of all, this, this report, this thank you note, actually, this thank you letter is from Megan McCarthy of the Lake Shore Child Advocacy Center. She says, Mayor Barnett and the Luddington City Council, I'm proud to share this report. She's included their annual report. Share this report with you, a look at all we accomplished in 2024. We extend our sincerest thanks to the city council for their American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funding, which has allowed us to amplify our impact. Thank you for your support of Lake Shore Children's Advocacy Center, and for your commitment to the community children, communities' children, with gratitude, Megan McCarthy. So I appreciate that. Thank you for the letter, and thank you for the report. And then the next item is, you have in your packet a copy of a resolution that I would ask this council to approve, recognizing Fabian Nizaki in the service, 31 years of service, as county administrator for the county of Mason. And so my intent is, if it's approved, to present it to him on Friday at the, have a ceremony for him, or perhaps a, yeah, ceremony for him, at the council chambers or commission chambers at the airport, Mason County Airport. And I believe that's from 4:00 to 6:00, or 3:00 to 6:00?
3:00 to 6:00.
3:00 to 6:00, thank you. All right, so I would look for a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Counsel Stibbets, support by Counsel Shaw. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the second public comment opportunity. We'll have, we'll hear, I'm sorry, we'll adhere to the same guidelines mentioned at the beginning of tonight's meeting, with the exception that each speaker will have two minutes. Requested, anyone wishing to address the city council, please step to the lectern, state your name, street address, or ward, city of residence, and organizational affiliation, if that's appropriate. Once you've done this, you'll be recognized for two minutes. We ask that you speak directly into the microphone and address all comments to the chair.
Raw sewage certifies that would take two hours for experienced clerks to retrieve this data. Maybe our city clerk can tell us why it would take two hours to do what any citizen could do in under a minute at home. Raw sewage didn't leave any hints for me, I'll leave this for you. Second, I was charged even more clerical time in order to separate exempt material from non-exempt material in the credit card records. Reason why this is illegal is that raw sewage never claimed any exemptions in the first place in what should be totally non-exempt records. If there's no exemptions claimed, there should be no work done in separating nothing out. That works for body cam footage, too. Lastly, I was given a fee under the section Other Charges, where no exemption for the charges given anywhere. The state FOIA does not allow for speculative fees, fees without any basis. They need to reflect actual causes of the public body, as such as repuditing the section for the FOIA and its third and final attempt at fraud and public extortion by raw sewage in this FOIA response. One has to ask the question, why is a city so reluctant to allow their credit card purchases to be audited by the citizens? One need look no further than this meeting's paying other bills in the council packet. Credit card purchases paid by the general fund show pattern. $106 to Jamesport Brewery, a couple of payments to the animal hospital for who knows what purpose, since Steve Jones told us the new canine would get nothing from the general fund.
Mr. Rada, would you lower your volume just a little bit? It is painful.
Excuse me, this is my public comment. Clear out.
You'll do it at a lower volume, or you won't make it.
Dude, you're taking my time.
I'll give you extra time, just lower your voice. Thank you.
$312 to buy award plaques from safety decals, when a couple custom award ribbons can be made online for under a dollar, but then a senior city official can't profit from that transaction. You could, you people could learn a lot from Fabian Nizaki. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for a second public comment?
I'm Katie Karabaski. I would want to close by reiterating the gravity of the issue of the legality, transparency, and trust of the DNR. It is no longer a question of whether there is enough evidence, as we have provided abundant evidence to make our point obvious. However, it is a question of whether this council will act on that evidence. You now possess proof of the violations. As elected officials, you have the duty to ensure that our community's rights and resources are not subverted by unlawful actions. Failing to act on this is no different than failing in your obligation to the people you represent. I greatly urge you to take the next steps to hold the DNR accountable to ensure transparency and protection of our constitutional rights. The public is watching, and history will judge how this council chooses to respond to this vital moment. God bless you in standing for what is right, no matter the adversity you may face. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Daniel Johnson, 503 North Levine Street. I gotta believe what I just witnessed tonight with the 457 and the Oprah, the UDO that was actually passed prior to this meeting, it was actually unconstitutional. Under certain DEI formats, I guess you would say, that's riddled throughout that ordinance that allows for imminent domain and seizure of certain properties, they don't meet those ordinances within a year's time. Combined with the Oprah that you just voted on, allows you to increase taxes on those vacant properties or people that actually meet the requirements of the ordinances, you're upping their taxes, so you're pushing out people is what you're doing, is my opinion. It's all coming out, under Trump's executive orders that he just passed. I don't know. It's up to you guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, we'll close it to public comment, and we'll move on to miscellaneous business.
I have one good thing to share for tonight. Winter has us in its cold grips last week, with wind chills approaching minus 20 degrees Fahrenheit and 12 to 18 inches of new snow. It had everyone dreading to go outside. Schools were canceled, activities were delayed, and businesses closed, all for public safety. But let's take a moment to give thanks to the people who helped all of us to get through this winter crunch. The snowplow drivers, who kept our roads cleared for people who had to get out last week. The hospital staff, who probably had to work double shifts to fill in for workers who couldn't get to work. The heating repairmen, the plumbers who were called in to repair frozen pipes, and all the wonderful residents who checked on neighbors, snow blued sidewalks and driveways, and who adopted a fire hydrant to keep it free of snow in case of emergency. We really do live in a remarkable small town, don't we?
Thank you. Anything else?
I would like to say one thing, actually two, if you don't mind. The last few weeks, we've had horrible weather, and I just want to thank Andy Lar and the rest of the DPW crew. They've really done a fantastic job here. No complaints, a lot of great senses of humor and smiles, and I'm just very appreciative of them for keeping up with the terrible weather, and quite frankly, showing up every day and doing a great job. And I just want to, I know the question has been asked, but I'm going to ask it one more time. Chief Jones, the canine expenses are paid by the Friends of the Luddington Police, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And there are funds already in an account to pay the credit card bill that is currently receiving those charges, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? All right, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn at 7:08. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. We are adjourned.